Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners Committee, the whole session this morning. We welcome everyone on behalf of the board that's joined us in the boardroom, as well as those that have joined us virtually. We appreciate your interest and look forward to seeing you again in the future. With that said, we're going to start the meeting. I'm going to call it to order at eight o'clock, and we're going to have our roll call by clerk Thettin, and then we'll go right into our new business. Clerk Thettin, would you proceed with the roll call?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioner Varios?
Present.
Commissioner Barba?
Present.
Commissioner Vaughn is absent. Commissioner Luke?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you, clerk Thettin, for the roll call. So moving on to new business, we do have a brief agenda today, but don't be fooled. We'll see how it goes. The first item this morning is introduction of Regent's Agency on Agency and new chief executive officer, Dana Altum.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for allowing me to come in and introduce myself this morning. I look forward to working with you all. I have a few quick things. Obviously, the introduction. I've been here in this position about two weeks. However, I have been with Regent Seven for the last eighteen months, exclusively working with their PACE program, and so look forward to working with all of you in this new capacity. I wanted to thank you for the time that you have pointed Mr. Sanders to our Board of Directors. He has done a phenomenal job. I know that his term has come to an end by his choice, and he did share with us that he had tendered his resignation to all of you as well. So when I scheduled this meeting, I scheduled it to talk about how we could work together to find someone to fill his seat. However, since that time, my understanding is that Mr. Henry Wymer from our Advisory Council has applied for that position. So I am hopeful that you will be able to appoint Henry, or if there's someone else you were looking to appoint very soon, we want to make sure you have a seat at the table. With that, if we can, in the future, work on succession plans so we can ensure there's no gap, I would love to work on that with you. I did grow up in this area. I'm from Tuscola County originally. I live just outside of Tuscola County now, in Tusagonah, and so I'm glad to, again, help identify a succession plan in the case that Mr. Wymer or whomever is appointed at the time that they end their term. The only other thing that I have this morning for you is I wanted to reassure you that, like all of you, we are monitoring the budget situation very closely, the government shutdown, how that affects our state budget, et cetera. And we have a ninety-day contingency plan with our agency. So with that, we have not stopped receiving full Medicare and Medicaid payments for the services that we deliver underneath those funding sources. And so we are in a very good place that even if the funding, for instance, for your meals was delayed for a significant amount of time, we will cover it in full. You should see no interruption, at least for the foreseeable future, in your meal services in your county. That's all I have for today. Any questions?
Any questions for Dana?
Wonderful. Thank you all.
I just want to say it's encouraging with the ninety-day contingency plan and no current concern about retail under services. I think that's a broad concern of everyone, no matter what. Of course, sort of uncertain as we watch this unfold. But appreciate all that you are doing and stepping forward and coming in and advising the board of where the area agency is currently at.
Thank you so much. Look forward to working with you all.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item number two, which is, Carly, could you talk to us about the new lease agreement?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
It's just our time to renew our annual MOA for the fiscal year 2026. Not much has changed in the MOA since the last year and previous years. I did just want to mention, though, that, as you may or may not be aware, due to federal budget cuts, we had to eliminate ninety-four positions across the state that were dedicated to SNAP Ed, Community Nutrition Programming. So that's no longer a federal program, and all of the land-grant universities and all kinds of entities across the country had to eliminate their programs as well. So we had two people in our office that were funded by the SNAP Ed grant. So they're no longer employed by us. We're still trying to figure out what community health and nutrition looks like. There's obviously a space and a need for that in the state. So we're trying to be very strategic and take some time to figure out, you know, where we could get additional funding, what the internal structure and the logistics look like for that. So if and when we can move forward, I would really like to use some of our millage dollars, our fund balance, to potentially, if that's the direction that we're going in as a university, to create some kind of health programming position to be here in Tuscola County. They reached a lot of people, a lot of people in a vulnerable population, low income. So we still want to make sure we're serving the community in that way. So we'll see what that looks like. But if and when we do get to that, we'll just amend the MOA and include that and move forward with that. So any questions with this?
Any questions for Carly?
Yes, so all of them are covered with the MOAs. So our four-H program coordinator, Reina Wilkerson. Full-time. Yep, she's full-time. And then our office support staff, Diana Maruso. And then this is my home office as well. So when I'm not in my other four county offices, this is my home base.
Carly, related to the SNAP, just a quick, brief, just how broad was that in Tuscola County? And what do you see the impact being? Because it was an immediate elimination practically, so.
Well, we found out in July. It was signed July 3rd. And we sent out layoff notices or notices of positions being eliminated. We had a couple of different classifications that required different things, but that was the end of July. So September 30th was their last day. It's difficult to tell the future impact of not having those people. I mean, I could tell you what, you know, in our annual reports in the past, how many people they reached and what that impact was. You know, with things like Medicaid and SNAP benefits at, you know, we're kind of in a tricky position here. And we're just trying to do our best and still serve the community with the needs that we're seeing and hearing. So, like I said, obviously, there's still a need because we are reaching a lot of people, and we are collecting data that showed that it was impactful work. So hopefully, we can come up with some kind of strategy in funding moving forwards. We can have some type of health and nutrition outreach.
So in terms of the number of people in our county that took SNAP benefits or took the advantage of having them, what does that look like?
You know, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. I would have to look back at our previous annual reports. But, I mean, with our one programming nutrition instructor here, we are probably reaching at least two or three hundred people a year in different capacities. So whether that's through a series format, where they're going in and teaching a group of people six times, like once a week for six weeks, or, you know, a one-time presentation, a one-time visit. We are also doing what we call policy systems and environmental work. So really, taking a deeper dive into the sites at our community partners and helping them make more sustainable, long-term changes for whoever their constituents are. So it's a little harder to capture the impact of that kind of work, but we know that is the most impactful work because it really gets to the root cause of why people are limited in making healthy changes. So, yeah.
Well, thanks for that overview. You also have an agreement for extension services. Any comments that you'd like to make on that?
No. Basically, so here under C, the Staffing and Financial Summary, those are the positions that we have housed here in the county. But as you'll read in the section above, we have staff that kind of are, you know, we have educators that are on a regional role, some that have a statewide appointment. So other than the two people that are permanently here, housed in Tuscola County, we have other staff that are reaching the citizens here in Tuscola County as well. We've got, and here on county, a health educator. She doesn't do community nutrition work, such as SNAP Ed, but it's more falls prevention, chronic disease, and pain management, that type of thing. So she does classes down here as well, food safety. We have a food safety educator housed in the Huron County office who does programming in Tuscola quite a bit, like serves safe. We have ag educators that they're serving the region, but also the state in beef feedlot systems, as well as crop and soil nutrient management. And really, you know, we have staff, even on campus, our specialists, who are partnering with the staff here in the thumb to, you know, share their research at different programs for growers and things like that.
Continuing the services you've always provided.
Yes, absolutely.
So from that perspective, board, this new agreement takes effect January 1st, 2026. What's the progress of the board? Would you like to move to the consent agenda? Would you have a different opinion? Would you like to add a motion or what you thought?
It's the same as last year, isn't it? I would say consent agenda, myself.
Place it on consent? Be on the consent agenda for two days.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carly, as always. Brian McCombe, Michigan State Police. Have you ever give us a traffic enforcement report before to that?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. For those who don't know me, excuse me. I'm Brian McCombe. I'm the post commander at the Carroll Post. I've been with the state police now for twenty-five years. I've been in law enforcement a total of twenty-nine years. I'm a former deputy here in Tuscola County, and I'm also a former Millington police officer. So I've kind of ran the gamut of state, local, and county. I started my career up in Bannax. I worked there for thirteen years as a trooper. When we merged in 2011 with Carroll, I came down here to Carroll and served for a couple more years as road trooper. I promoted to sergeant and detective here at Carroll. And then I promoted to assistant post commander over to Tri-City, where I worked in the city of Saginaw. So I've kind of seen rural, I've seen the city settings. Haven't said I haven't done it all in my career, that's for sure. Currently, I grew up in Millington, so I'm local. I've lived my whole life in Tuscola County, between Millington and Cassidy. I grew up in Millington, graduated from Millington. And I live here in Carroll now. So I'm heavily invested in the thumb. I'm heavily invested in traffic safety now, as I have done. These crashes that have happened make me sick. My family, I, you know, we travel the roads. My kids, my buddy's parents. So these crashes make me sick. I've met families from both the Amish crash and Putman crash. And my condolences, I know one of the Putman families here, some representatives from them. So, but number one, the blame on these crashes are solely the result of the driver. There's no one else's blame prior to these vehicles that blew these stop signs. I get along great with all my local sheriffs. And the Carroll Post, we cover Tuscola, Sandlake, and Huron Counties. I have a great relationship with all my sheriffs and local departments. The reason I left here twenty-five years ago was due to the pay of, you know, what the deputies made. So that was my main decision on leaving the sheriff's department, was to pay. And I truly feel that the dispatchers, prosecutor, deputies, all deserve to make more. Recruiting right now for law enforcement is extremely tough. Our troopers start out around eighty thousand a year, and we can't find people. So I can only imagine what the sheriff has to deal with, with his staffing needs. The staffing at the Carroll Post, I'll give you a little history. Currently, right now, I have seventeen troopers for three counties. I have five sergeants, two detectives, one motor carrier officer, who's like our commercial, you know, the truck guy. And out of that eight, or out of the seventeen, I have three that are on medical leave or FMLA, so that really cuts me down. But then, when you take out, I have a full-time court officer who runs between all three counties, a CSC investigator and a community service trooper. So in reality, I have ten troopers to cover three large counties. But this in perspective, in the early 2000s, the Carroll Post had about twenty people. Sandusky Post had about fifteen, and Bannax, we had about fifteen. So twenty years ago, we had fifty troopers, now compared to really ten. So staffing is significantly down. And doing some just research on these major crashes that we've had, they're happening in intersections. For enforcement reasons, we could sit there for a week. No one's going to run that stop sign. The minute we leave, someone's going to blow it and cause a crash. You know, I don't know what caused these, but the roads that these two major crashes have happened on are nice paved roads. The signage is proper. There's stop-ahead signs. There's stop signs on both sides of the roads. So what's causing these? One thing that we have noticed is the people on their cell phones, distractions within the car. It's an epidemic. People cannot put those phones down. We've been, I've directed my staff to, there's zero tolerance on any cellphone violations. The main responsibility, when a person's behind the wheel of a car, you're driving a weapon. It's a two, three, four, five thousand pound weapon you're driving down the road. And your focus needs to be on what's coming ahead of you, not looking down at your phone. So we have greatly increased our issuance of pulling people over and citations. But the hard thing with that, though, people see a marked patrol car coming. If they're on their phone, they're going to put it down. We can't see it. We've utilized some techniques. It's called Operation Ghost Rider, which started down in McComb County. It's where we will put people in unmarked vehicles. We'd like to have vehicles which are higher, like pickups. But we will use them as the vehicle to look for these violations, and they'll call it up to a marked unit, and they'll get stopped. We do that. We also have to be creative with hiding spots. There's a few spots around that you can kind of watch people as they drive by to see if they're on their phone. So that's the tactics we have to go to, to get the people on their cell phones. Recently, we, but with that, though, everyone in this room plays a part in that. If we could all just put our phones down. So we all bear responsibility for not being on our phones and paying attention while driving. Recently, this whole last year, I have four squads at the post. I have two afternoon squads and two day squads. But they're required to run traffic initiatives each month. But the problem with that, though, is we just, we can't strictly focus on Tuscola County. We have Sandlake and Huron also to provide coverage to. So the troopers will kind of pick a county, and they're looking for hazardous violations. Most recently, I put together a Tuscola countywide initiative. It didn't fall on the best day. The sheriff's office was tied up with some training, but they didn't provide two deputies. The Carroll Police Department, they had, they were offering training that day, so they weren't able to participate. But that happened on October 16th. For my post, I had two troopers, a sergeant, myself. Our district traffic team, which is based out of Flint, but they cover the whole third district, which is, I don't know how many, nine, ten, eleven counties that they cover. But they came over to help, which was a sergeant and three troopers and two deputies. During about an eight-hour stretch, we stopped one hundred and twenty cars, eighty-two warnings, fifty-five tickets, and four arrests is what we did on that one day. That's good, you know, it floods the area. We monitor social media, and, you know, people are on there commenting, oh, don't go down twenty-four, you're going to get pulled over. Well, if that's what it takes for people to follow the law, I guess that's fine with us. So I have another upcoming traffic safety initiative in November. And I'll tell people it's November 6th. You know, get the word out. At least, maybe we'll have crashes on November 6th. The people know we have a lot more enforcement up here. But with that, that's going to be the same thing. The Carroll Post, our district traffic team, our commercial motor vehicle enforcement division will usually have two or three officers over. The sheriff's office and Carroll PD have agreed to help out that day, too. So now getting back to some of these issues. Up in Huron County, I worked up there for several years, and still do. But there was two major intersections we had up in Huron County. M-142 and Pennabon Road, which is between Bannax and Altum. Several crashes there, significant injury, fatal crashes. And Sewin and Bayport Road. And Bayport, if you're not familiar, it's Cowood Road in our county. But if you want to look to see, here on county, the road commission is a leader in traffic safety. If you want to see how it's done, just travel up to Cowood, or, excuse me, Bayport and Sewin Road and look at that intersection. They have rumble strips. They had flashing light on their stop sign, a blinking light. It's now a four-way stop. Same thing with M-142 and Pennabon. That intersection's basically the same with what they've done. So they do, I don't know if there needs to be with the road commission more collaboration with Huron County, or maybe to partner with them, or what we can do, but they are a definite leader in traffic safety. The signage at these intersections, yes, it's adequate. It's what is required. Could more be done, I think so. I think we could have either these intersections made to four-way stops. Because if you think about it, I can name off the top of my head, Irish and Bertrand, fifteen and Bertrand, Bradleyville and Fairgrove Road, Basser and Guilford, Deckerville, Hertz Corner, Deckerville and Beavins. We need to do more at these intersections. I don't know if the answer is a four-way stop or flashing lights, but something needs to be done. Enforcement alone is not going to solve these crashes. I've been out, I work a lot of traffic. I've been down, I've been trying to concentrate more on Deckerville and Hertz Corner Road. Hertz Corner Road has, kind of became the new Cowood Road or Bradleyville Road. People are taking Hertz Corner Road, not from this area, to bypass Carroll to get up to Huron County. It's a smooth road. It's various, it's a nice drive. But I've caught a lot of people speeding through there. I haven't caught any stop sign violations. But speed is definitely an issue, and we've addressed those with citations, so. But I just think signage, rumble strips, and things could definitely help on these rural roads where people get complacent, not paying attention. Trying to see, I got some notes here, sorry. And again, with the signage and stuff like that, I don't know the cost of what these would cost. I don't know what rumble strips cost. I don't know what the cost of putting a four-way in stop sign is. But I read in the paper about grant funding, that they have to have, people have to have grants to do this. I don't know if that is true. It's not my, it's not my expertise. But there's, I think we need to come up with some unique funding sources, maybe community foundations, maybe, there's got to be things out there. I would have to think, too, that we would qualify for some national highway safety funding money due to the amount of crashes and fatalities that we've had on our roads. But that's just some of my ideas. I do co-chair the Thumb Area Traffic Safety Network, which a lot of people have never heard of. We have meetings anytime, you know, sometimes twice a year, three times a year. They're held at various locations around the thumb. I plan on having another one at the Brentwood here in Carroll this month, or, excuse me, in November, sometime in November. And what this is, is anyone can attend these meetings. I've added all the commissioners to my email list, so you'll get an invite to these. It's a free lunch paid by Office of Highway Safety Planning. And people who attend these are, you know, law enforcement, fire, EMS, wrecker drivers, court personnel, MDOT, road commission, hospitals, driver training instructors. It's, anyone can attend these. If you have an interest in roadway safety, you're more than welcome to attend. But when we decide on that, I will definitely get the date out. Steps we've taken at Carroll, I have two assigned traffic cars. They do strictly traffic enforcement. But again, they're not strictly Tuscola County. They cover here on Sandlake as well. I've been working very closely with our district traffic team. They have a sergeant and three troopers, who, that's all they do is traffic. And they have been over here quite a bit more lately. One lives just outside our county. But he is an absolute machine with traffic safety and traffic stops. I think last year, he stopped close to thirty-five hundred cars a year. We do the traffic initiatives monthly. Each squad was one monthly. Another thing I've worked with, I've worked with the prosecutor's office and the court system, that we will no longer reduce our plea down hazardous citations, stop signs, red lights, speeding, cellphone usage, anything like that. There's not going to be any offers. They either pay it, or they go to court. And now for us, too, a lot of times, it's so easy to prove our violations. We have the in-car cameras, especially for red lights or stop signs. Another thing that a lot of people don't know, if someone witnesses a car blow a stop sign, if they get a plate and call that into dispatch, that can actually, we can still go back and write a ticket for that. It's a little bit of investigative work, but it can be done. But then again, though, we don't recommend people chasing down vehicles to get a license plate or have any road rage type situation. But that is another possibility, if people do witness something, stop sign, per se. Steps can be taken after that, too, even if it's not witnessed by law enforcement. I have a community service trooper, who I've instructed him to address issues within the school, especially this hands-free law. I have banners coming, I'd like to put up at some of our schools, the entrance or exit ways, so the kids see these. But with the cellphone, everyone thinks it's the kids. It's not. Believe me, it's anywhere from elderly people, middle age, to the kids. It is everyone that's on their phone. It's not just a high school age kid or a college age kid. It's everyone. I've talked to the prosecutor about maybe doing a public service announcement. I've done them before on the radio station up in Bannax on topics. That's a possibility, just to get the word out about our court procedure, how we're not going to reduce any tickets. And if you get one, you're going to pay for it or go to court on it. That's kind of it. I'm open for any questions. Thank you for having me. But again, it takes all of us to prevent these, and tickets, too. We can ticket everyone we pull over. But tickets aren't going to work, or get out of this problem of the stop signs and these crashes. It's a part of the process. It's not going to solve the problem.
Questions for Brian?
I have one. I tried that out there at M-15 and Bertrand Road. And they said MDOT had to do a test study. And they said, and they come back and said, there's not enough out there to get it done. They did put some extra signs up, but I wanted rumble strips on Bertrand Road. They have, you know, one or two a month out there, you probably know. And the MDOT would not do anything about it. So I don't know how you go around, why we have to do that. I mean, the county, the road commission, they can only do what, you know, what they're told they can do out there on the MDOT road. So how do we get around that?
Well, I'd be interested to see on the survey that they did, when are they doing the survey? We all know that if they do it in the middle of January, yes, traffic will be significantly reduced compared if they do it on a, you know, especially with M-15 and Bertrand Road. A lot of people, out of state people, will take that way to the Bertrand Mall or Frankham. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, even Monday, Thursday, I would say significantly more traffic in that area. So I'd be really interested to see. So I'd be really interested to see, or maybe we could even partner with MDOT. But that's a good question for any of the traffic safety meeting, MDOT does attend those.
Okay.
But yeah, to find out more details on that survey, I'd like to know that. And on state highways, I know, gosh, I'm trying to think, I think on the 142, I think they do have the rumble strip report Pennabon Road. But I'm, again, the specifications on, on the county road or state, or state trunk line, I don't know who's responsible for which or how that would work. But I think we, maybe meeting with MDOT could clear some of these questions.
Because Bertrand Road being a county road, I would think that our county should be able to do something there if we wanted to. I mean, I could see if it was on M-15, but that's our, it's our county road.
Yep, and too, maybe if we got with Huron County with their road commission to find out the steps they took for 142 and Pennabon, because that's the same thing, state truck lines versus Pennabon Road being county roads.
And you're right, Irish roads the same way, they blow that stop sign all the time.
And, and if you look back, a lot of these crashes are from people who aren't from this area.
Yeah.
I can, if I can give you something. I attended the road commission meeting last week. And the primary topic that they discussed was the issue of the accidents on Hertz Corner Road. And they talked about different options that they were looking at. And their hands are tied, they can't go out there and do something immediately because they've got to go step through hoops. But I, I, pardon me. I, I travel that road myself and my children travel that road when they come to visit me because they live in Huron County. And that is a shortcut for us to go, instead of going to Carroll, is to go right through and cut through to Mayville. It is rural and my son said, because it's rural and there's so many trees around, even though the intersection is clear, you can kind of become blinded by the fact that you've got to stop at some point. But I, I was out there, I, I went on Friday and they have quite additional signs up. It appears to me, I didn't notice the yellow signs on both sides and they've got a cross road sign up there. So they've done some things to improve it, more so than Bevins Road. Bevins Road has the little yellow ones, but not as much signage. So they, they are taking this extremely seriously and they are working diligently to do whatever they can and possibly in their color. They, so that they have to get data in to see what was the original cause of all the crashes. Was it, you know, driver distraction or was it something? So they have to get all that together, but they are very seriously, I mean, that was the topic.
And, and you're absolutely right. Unfortunately, when these crashes do happen, it does take, it's not something that we can flip a switch or snap our fingers and have it to happen. They do have to wait for crash reports and data and engineers have to look at it. But yeah, unfortunately, it does take time. I've even seen in other areas, I don't know if it's Michigan or travel occasionally, but I've seen dangerous intersection that had signs, which for me, it makes me, when I see that, ooh, shoot, better pay more attention. You know, so even something maybe as simple as that could, could be in the fix, but.
There's a rumble strip on, if you take Cemetery and into Huron County, changes the name of the road. That's a pretty darn good rumble strip, I'll tell you what, it'll wake you up, whether it go one way or the other.
Yeah, they've done, Huron County's done a fantastic job, you're talking Elkton and Seawind, Elkton and Seawind Road.
And because there are some that you can ride over and you don't notice them, but that one, I mean, it's really.
Like anything, they, I think they wear it, wear out after a certain amount of times when they go back in and, you know, they engrave them into the road. But yeah, they well aware also, they do need, there is a, a cost to those obviously, but there's a cost to maintaining them also.
I appreciate your efforts.
Well, we're trying. And again, my condolences too, and I'll pop in here.
Brian, I have a few, if I, if I may. Deeply tragic, all these accidents and the effect on the community and trying to sort it out. It's a culmination of all those things that you've been talking about over the years. And unfortunately, between the funding, staffing, at all levels in this county apparently, the road patrol, it, it's very discerning because of, concerning because really, you can expect the same, nothing, if nothing changes. I really appreciate the fact you're monitoring Hertz Corner Road, that stretch between 81 and Dutcher, down that hill is a 70 mile an hour, it's a 75, that's a Class A road, I think, all the way to Deckerville. If it's not, it's perception until you hit the curve after the bridge. Since I live on that road, I can tell you that, that the speed on that is tremendous. Just like it is on 81, I, in my estimation, a third of the drivers are going 70, no matter what time it is, especially this morning, because it doesn't take much to tell that. I'm even concerned with the fact that the Main Street Carroll is 35, and if you watch that, I, I know they're not going 35. You go to Elkton, you know you've got to go 25. You come to Carroll, even though it's a pass route, seems like a pass route. If, someone's going to get tragically hit there because whether it be B trucks. It's something's going to happen.
With, let me address, sorry commissioner, one of your concerns with, one thing I've noticed on Hertz Corner Road, south of 81 is a lot more commercial vehicle traffic.
Tremendous.
And I don't know when people are punching these in, if they're coming from Tower, if they're coming from Huron Castings or Walro and, or TI Automotive, if that's the route that they're given by GPS. But I've noticed a lot more commercial vehicle traffic on that road. But one thing we could do is we could get with Sheriff Robinson to have the speed trailer put out there and do a quick speed study. I can get with him or manager Anderson in the back, maybe we can coordinate something to get that out there.
Well, and that's just one of many roads is being talked about, but definitely that has become a focus point of, as you said, getting here in county. The truck traffic has certainly increased on that road. I don't know if that was ever planned for or not, but it certainly is a, is becoming a problem. And, and that's just, that's just one road, obviously. I think that combined with the cell phones and many of the challenges that you have, there's a, as you said or alluded to, there's a huge lack of attention, responsibility of driving and there's more cars on the road, you just, just take a road scholar to figure that out. On Hertz Corner Road and others, at least flashing lights, I'm up for anything on that corner, at least flashing lights, something. And I know from Commissioner Lutz and Commissioner Barrios, we don't control the road commission. We had an opportunity to at one time and the board passed on that with the recommendation of the administrator at the time. But till this day, our biggest impact of the road commission is influence versus getting activity. And it's, it's encouraging to hear that they're talking about it. But I, I, we've had our sheriff, Brian Robinson in. I think there's a lot of frustration and certainly from, just from a pay standpoint, as you alluded to, that is a huge significance in terms of what Tuscola County does. It attracts, it trains and it loses to some other, close city, cast city, whatever. Those are the things that we're faced with and I, I applaud what you're doing and your staff and the fact that there's only 10 left for three counties. Figure that out when they're all out on the road responding to a call. I, I don't know how you do it and that, it's deplorable. Was there not anything, I mean, I'm not, I know the budget's done at the state level, but.
With, with staffing wise, well, recruiting is the biggest thing is, I just had one resign last week due to medical issues. But they say my full staff should be around 24 troopers, I believe, which we haven't had that amount since 2011 or 12 when we merged. But no, it's, we recruit people, we try to get them in. We have one in the academy now that graduates next month, so we'll be up one more. But it's just, it's a combination of, it's not a popular job. You work nights, weekends, holidays. Our pay is pretty good, so we have a little advantage of that. But it's just society now, this isn't a popular job that young people are going into. But we play a part in that solution too. That's why I have a community service trooper to get out to the schools, to get out, talk to these kids, to do the trumpet trade events, to be involved in the public, to coach. This is much more than a job. I, I, to be honest with you, I'm trying to steal your deputies. You know, I, I truly am, we have a lateral entry school coming up, you have some fine employees. I'd love to have them be troopers. They go through a 12-week academy down at Lansing, then they're right back here in Carroll. But that's, it's unfortunate that we have to do that and that's what all law enforcement's doing. We're stealing from one another, we're never gaining, we're never getting ahead. You know, if I gain two more troopers, you could be losing two deputies, so how far ahead are we? We're not, we're right back in the same situation of, of being short-staffed. It takes teamwork. I can tell you in this county, we all have each other's backs, we all help each other out because we have to. We all know each other, we do events with each other, we play basketball, we play softball, we do a lot of things to, because we get to know each other. It's a lot more personal here in smaller counties compared to even, say Saginaw County or Genesee County. You don't know, you don't get to know the local people or the, you know, I can name off the fire chiefs. It's just, it's different working in a rural county. Has its advantages, we don't have the major crime, but our major issue is crashes. So it's hard to recruit people, it's hard to get them to stay, as county knows. Yeah, they're a training ground for Saginaw, Frankham, Cast City, Carroll.
And Brian, I'd be mistaken, I didn't include M-53 from Cast City Road tomorrow later, even north on, on the speed on that road is just horrendous. And as you know, with the number of accidents and, that has an issue of its own. It's no different than any other road apparently, but it is just a 75 in the country.
Lieutenant, does the pier post come up this way at all?
Generally, well, that's a good question. We have one trooper assigned to the traffic team. He's technically, his postal appears and he'll drive a 3.4 car. Our cars are 3.3, their appears 3.4, so you will see a 3.4 car around, but that's our district traffic guy. But generally, we've been called upon a few times lately to go down into Genesee to cover because of major incidents they've had down there. But that's the one thing with us is we'll move manpower around within the district if there's a certain event going on. I know we had that happen. We went down to Genesee County to cover. Tri-City has came up over to assist us with some coverage at times. But usually takes a major incident to have another post, because they're shorthand. Every post in the state is shorthand. Tri-City, when I was there, we had close to 50 troopers, they're down to 28, 29 troopers right now. And it's significant for them because they cover the freeways, they have, you know, we don't have a freeway through here, but they cover I-69 in US, or I-75 in US 10, but they also cover the city of Saginaw, they help with the coverage. So I mean, every, there's not one agency in the state I don't think that can say they're full of people.
I see a lot of your guys' cars at the different townships parked.
They've changed, yeah, they've changed our take-home vehicle policy now where you have to live in the post area to have a take-home car. Before it was pretty broad where I had a trooper living over by Midland, he had a take-home car to come over to Carroll to work. But now they've limited that, so the cars that you do see, like our field of township hall, I think I have one there, a few in Reese parked and a couple down in Bossory, but those are people who live out of the area, coming to pick up their car and starting their shift down in other areas. So they've been driving to Carroll, you know, they can start right at 6:00 AM or 3:00 PM and start picking calls right in that area.
So the trade-off with that versus, you know, taking them home, they have to drive someplace else to start their shift basically versus they could be starting as soon as they get into the car, is that correct?
They could, but there wasn't much benefit to that. My honest opinion is I'm very glad that the, our department limited that because it was, a lot of times after working a 12-hour shift, the last thing you do if you're traveling home to Midland is get involved in something unless it's absolutely serious, they would. But a lot of times, this is my opinion, they, they were just trying to get home. We were paying them gas money and our vehicle used to go to and from home with very limited productivity. There were some, don't get me wrong, there were some who, no matter what, they, they would do their, you know, a minor violation, they would stop, but for the most part, I'm glad they cracked down on this.
Well, in closing, and certainly you can entertain more questions, what suggestions do you have that you might want to convey to this board?
We need more deputies, that's my honest thing and, you know, not, it's the whole public safety network in general. When I say deputies, I'm almost, I'm still referring to dispatch. We need more dispatchers there, I think their staff is in half. Prosecutors is the same way, because everything we do funnels its way. Each one of those entities has a connection with law enforcement. You know, we call out our traffic stops, there's a dispatcher answering it. We write a ticket or we arrest someone, it's, you know, it's starting with dispatch, you know, call out the stop or get dispatch or something. It goes to the court, we have a prosecutor prosecute the case. So it's, you hate to say it, but a lot of these things come down to money and budget. And we have to set our priorities on, for a safe community, people look at crime, schools and hospitals. If we can be successful in those three, we're in a pretty darn good community. So it, for me, it boils down to priorities.
When you say staffing at the state level, that's basically state. I mean, the counties really don't have any influence on that, do they?
I don't understand your question.
Well, you said staffing, you know, increase the staffing. We can increase or make it more amiable here in our county, but at the state level, that comes.
For troopers, yeah.
Yeah.
For troopers, no, I, I, my, my boss is in Flint, my captain and my inspectors, and they're fully aware of our issues here. They're very supportive of anything I need. They would love to give me more troopers. But there's a formula that they use on, on which post is the shortest. We're definitely up there within our district, but I think Tri-City, pretty much probably goes Tri-City then Carroll for staffing needs. And it's about getting people in the academy to get them to these spots. So we're trying.
Do you think some of these issues will be remedied if the leadership of the state police were changed?
No. There's been a lot of news about our leadership and I, I don't think that has any effect, you know. People like to talk about that things, but it has minimal, if any, effect here at the Carroll post on, on what's happening in Lansing. I like to joke that the farther away from Lansing you are, the less problems that you have. Everyone says that, but no, leader, leadership that our agency has nothing to do with, with any of the issues that we face here.
Any other questions for Brian?
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Again, I'll invite you to the next meeting if you have, if there's any questions, concerns, be open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, it's very enlightening and so many challenges, it's overwhelming in all levels. And with that, let's move on to item number four, which is going to be our equalization director, Andrew Daniels.
Good morning.
25 county apportionment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do.
Angie, did you supply the magnifying glass with it?
Well, we do put it on the website and you guys, it will be electronic, so you can use that zoom feature and see it a little better. But. So, you know what, I'm going to keep.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is our, well, I should say preview. We'll do the official adoption on Thursday, but this is the preview of our annual county apportionment report. Presents the military rates and tax levies for all governmental units in Tuscola County. And these amounts are collected as part of our July and December tax bills. And just to give you a brief summary, this, our department is responsible to see that military rates are rolled back based upon the Headley Amendment. And we also, we examine all the certificates, statements, papers and records submitted to our office showing the money to be raised in the several loving entities. So after we review and confirm all that information, a report is assembled, which is, which is. So after we review and confirm all that information, a report is assembled, which is, which is before you. And that tabulates the results for each taxing jurisdiction. Um, the amounts in this report reflect collection of dollars. And, uh, this is based on taxable values as of October, October 22nd. So we try to, um, I do that more for informational purposes because we do have some pretty big, um, numbers that come out of there. For instance, uh, we have to run values, taking out like veterans exemption material and things like that. So that way we can actually give you a little bit better idea of actually how much money is raised. Um, so you'll see in the report, the breakdown of all the military rates, um, taxable values, the tax levies. And, um, and then again, it, it's just a good report. I always encourage, um, anyone, especially you commissioners, hang on to it. It's good reference material for when those discussions do come up about, you know, any budget matters. Um, anything having to do with local county, even the state, you know, money that comes in, um, for those, those like SCT villages. It's just good to be able to reference that, to give you an idea, um, where all our money is coming from, at least, you know, the big portion of the county's revenues. Um, and just to highlight, you'll see in the report, once you get past the very small data that Mr. Barble was referencing, um, you'll see, we do put some charts in there, which are nice, some, some comparisons as far as, um, you know, who, what the villages, cities, townships are levying, uh, as far as total military rates. And then you'll see the individual, you know, unit breakdowns. And then at the very end, you'll also see there's some other report or some other, um, figures associated with, you know, just again, giving you an idea of the estimated tax dollars that those villages generate. So we just try to, this report, we just try to provide it so that way, you know, it's not just military rates and taxable values. It gives you a little bit more idea of, of the big picture. So. And, uh, a resolution has been prepared for Thursday's meeting and we're ready to go. So. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Angie? I have a question. On page 50, I'm missing that page. It summarizes this in the sense that it tells us the increase from over the 24 revenue. And I'm sure that page is missing.
No, well, we don't include that, but I can give you an idea. I, I have prepared some, um, revenue projections. And, uh, at the request of the front office and various department heads. Just to give us an idea, uh, we are still, I believe, we did just finally get our last, um, CPI number for September, and we got that end of last week. So according to my calculations, it hasn't been officially put out, but, uh, we are looking at 2.7% for next year uh, for the inflation rate multiplier. Plugging that in, taking into account the further depreciation of our wind parks, you know, because that is a huge, depreciating revenue source each year. We are still outpacing that, so that's good. Other than that, I, you know, just, like I've said to others, we're, we're doing okay, okay? You know, we don't have any figures going down right now. So as long, I mean, we continue to have higher inflation, which means that our tax base is going to see an increase. As long as we're outpacing that depreciation of that wind, um, we're, we're going to remain steady, if not see an increase. Values, uh, you know, agriculture, we, we're wrapping up the studies right now. Uh, farmland prices are, um, crazy, to say the least, all over the county. Uh, residential is still very aggressive in most areas, and a lot of that is due to lack of inventory. There's just, that's been that case for a few years now. There's just not a lot of, of inventory, not a lot of homes for sale. So that definitely creates some bidding wars and, and can drive some prices up. So overall, um, there isn't anything, even commercial and industrial, um, we've, we've, you know, seen some activity there. Building permits, I just recently, uh, had my staff compile, and you'll see that when we present, when I present county apportionment. Um, but we had higher, higher than normal new build starts, which I'm not surprised to see because again, if there's no homes to buy and we have that lack of inventory, we are going to see more. And, but I did have them compile it. We went through all the permits that we get a copy of and, and, uh, just out of curiosity, because I see them every week, because we distribute those to the local unit assessors. And I was like, man, we've had a lot of new construction permits. So that's good. We like, you know, obviously all of us want to see that. That's a good thing. Um, it's good to see that activity in the county. So that's a plus. So from my perspective right now, we should, you know, we're doing, we're doing good. We're doing what we should be. So, as far as down the road, I don't know if any of these solar projects come to fruition. I know, uh, the one down, down in Arbela, we met, um, some time ago. I did meet with, um, locals and with Ranger Power. Uh, that, I believe, if it were to continue, and I haven't heard any updates as of late, but that, I believe, was, was a potential, you know, revenue source for 2027, I believe, would be the earliest we would see that. So we're keeping an eye on all that. There's some other projects, uh, I think battery storage. There's some other things that I know we just, I just met with all my assessors last week and, um, I believe, what Akron Township and Fair Grove Township both have some projects in the works. So, you know, that could be additional revenue over and above similar to the wind. So. So just to kind of give you that summary of, yeah, what's going on in the county, that's what I know right now.
So it, I'm going by memory, Angie, but it seemed like, and I do have this in writing somewhere. Was it 24 to 25? Maybe it was 25. It was, uh, about 500,000 that was going to be contributed in revenue from increased in property tax, correct? So moving into 26, is that going to be same, less, or more? What's your prediction?
As far as the amount?
Yeah.
Uh, I have it all in a spreadsheet that I can forward to you.
Could you, rather than the 50 page?
Or I can bring it in if you need it right now.
I mean, I'm just.
Because we have it broken down by village, too. So we have it, I have it broken down by general fund and then, um, all of the villages.
Just a projection in the sense that, you know, where we add in terms of, obviously, I just checked the inflation, I expected to grow a bit by quarter, for whatever reason, I'm not sure yet, but at any rate, just to sense a change.
Mm-hmm.
Up or down? Because revenue is going to be very important.
Yeah, we're up. I just don't know the dollar.
Well, it's either going to be a 500,000. That's where our baseline is. So anything above that would be up. And that's what I was looking for at some point. Projection, trend.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Like I said, if you want more specific figures, I've got that already generated as far as our, um, and like I said, it was provided to the front office, the 26. Do they have it in there?
I believe that.
Something in there of that sort?
I believe that Connie entered them in on the, um, draft budget.
Perfect.
But my document in here is regarding 2025 balances.
Like I said, I can run a report, especially if, I don't know which, what's covered in five, but I can bring a copy of that in, that spreadsheet. Just so you guys have an idea, you know, again, of what that difference is looking like as far as what we're estimating for 26. Definitely.
Angie, have you heard anything more about the batteries on Tuscola Township? They're supposed to put one on Reese Road. Have you heard anything more about that?
Is it battery storage?
Yes.
No, I have not. I have not heard any. And I'm trying to remember. Todd was, Todd, the assessor supervisor, was in our meeting, and I don't think he mentioned anything about it.
Okay.
Um.
They were talking at one time.
Yeah, like I said, I know, like I said, Akron and Fair Grove, both, those, those seem to be still underway. And then obviously the, the actual solar project down in Arbela, but I don't remember anything on Tuscola. And some of those, like, it's just been kind of quiet, so I don't know where any of those are at. So I don't know if, if what's going on, you know, in our federal government level, if that's having any impact or not. I, I just, I haven't heard anything more. So.
Excuse me, um, on, on tab number three of the financials, you'll see the draft 2026, um, for just the middle district.
So it is.
Would you like to?
Okay, yeah. I would have to double check. I'm sure that's the number that we provided, so.
Any other questions for Angie?
I think I have a comment. Um, when I was up at Elmwood Township, um, the other day, week, um, they had discussions about a battery, uh, data center in their township as well. And there were, uh, residents there in favor and against. So we know that it's been proposed, but there seem to have been proponents and opponents.
Oh, yes.
And their concerns were, uh, the water usage and the electrical, uh, consumption. Um, and they are a community which has also already faced some difficulty with their water. Um, I don't know if we're communicating all of the stuff that's, that's being, you know, that is, it's already in a couple of townships.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, we should be communicating that somehow.
See, look at it. It's not a pretty chart. We do that for visual, uh, enticement. Okay, yeah, so this shows that, yeah, we're, like, for instance, yeah, it, it's matching up. It looks like what we have in there. I won't get into the details. You guys do have it in front of you, so as far as what we're projecting for 26.
We have a lot of numbers in front of us.
You do. You do. Yep. So don't be overwhelmed. So you can, you can.
Look forward to the Cliff Mills version.
Yeah, right? Well, I'll, I'll be on hand in case any questions come up, but yes, yeah, that does match.
Thank you.
But yeah, so the moral of the story is, yeah, it's looking, you know, we're, we're plugging along and we don't have any sirens going off, so that's good. So. But.
I gotta make this comment. And now we've talked about this. In one sense, we're trying to find revenue and, you know, I'm talking about taxes, another 500,000 incremental and more inflation, more taxes.
Mm-hmm.
When you go out there, like, to the, to the constituents or those residents, they don't want to see taxes. They're looking for relief like everyone else.
Yeah.
All the inflation, food costs, you name it. This is not a popular, and as you know, like Florida, other states.
Correct.
They're no tax.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure where we're going on this, but there is a crescendo growing out there.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, whether expenses, we haven't got to that point yet, you know, where the expense line is growing faster, obviously, than revenue. And how much faster?
Yeah.
Is really concerning on the burden that the residents have to carry. I know you know that. I can bring it up.
Oh, yeah. We talk about it.
But it's hard to be out there that when they ask you these questions, you know, what can you do to explain this? What can you do as a board? Well.
I, I echo what you're saying. In fact, I know that, yeah, I've said that very thing, that, you know, people, that has been a topic amongst us directors because there is initiatives. There's been initiatives. There was one last year. There's still another one this year that, and, and we are seeing other states explore the, um, the possibility of eliminating property taxes. But I always tell people, the, we still have to figure out funding for those goods and services and for the schools and the libraries and the townships, like that, all of that stuff still has to be paid for. So whether or not you do it via property taxes, one way or another, we have to pay for tho- for those goods and services, right? We have to pay to pave the roads. We have to pay for emergency services, you know? So the scary part is, in my personal opinion, is that that gets, uh, we have to, we have to educate people as far as the costs for all these items. I, I, one thing that always used to form me about townships is how much it costs to pave one mile of road. And I keep, uh, saying, those of us at the county level, the local level, the state level, we need to educate people. Um, a, a lot of them, they don't know that. They don't understand the high costs. And, and as we all know, those costs are only going up. So we really need to do our part to, to educate people as far as what they are paying for. I, I definitely can, um, can understand the frustration with the taxes going up. That, that is another concern. In fact, I, you know, we assess for the city of Carroll, and the number one complaint I get isn't that their valuation is too high because most understand that, yes, our homes are worth much more than they used to be because values have gone up so significantly. But their complaint is just that, I can't afford the taxes. I can't afford this anymore. You know, with that taxable going up every year due to inflation, there's, that's still getting applied to the same, if not more, higher or more millage. And, and that is hard. So it is something that, and I know you, you got, you, you had the same struggling debate with, with villages, you know, the idea of proposed new villages. That's a tough discussion to have. Um, so I guess I just, uh, hope that, um, and coming into this budget cycle, that's why it's just, and you, you try to do that. You try to just keep things running as efficiently and it inexpensively as possible so that, um, we can hopefully do more with what we have. So.
Any other questions for Angie? Places on Thursday as a motion?
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Always enlightening, Angie.
I try.
All right, moving on to number five, the 2026 draft budget review by Erica Dibble, patrol administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. You'll have the, um, packet in front of you. I apologize, it's not up on screen. I finished it, uh, yesterday evening. I did not get it in the packet. It will be in the packet for Thursday's meeting and the agenda, so you can view it online there as well. So I know we are not going to go through every item today, so my intent was to provide you with the department requested, as well as a separated column for wage and fringe. I based this on a 0% increase merely for budgetary purposes, just to show you where we will land if we stay status quo. In addition, I did not put the full 38% increase in health insurance. The reason I did not do that is we have a significant fund balance in our six, seven, eight fund. So I did not increase at the full 38. We will need to review that as, as we get the answers from Gibson to see what number are we at and do the forecast. But for light level budget, I based it on half of the 38% increase. For now. As you will see, I highlighted some of the columns that are over budget, or excuse me, uh, will be in a deficit. In addition, um, the only way at this moment with this department requested level, the only way that we would balance would be to use our fund balance. Obviously, that's not the best-case scenario. Last year, we projected 650,000 use of fund balance. We have since reduced that, um, because we did receive some of those, um, additional revenues that were not anticipated. So we have been able to reduce that to 428,000 for 2025. That is on page seven, is the reduction, um, the orange highlight, use of fund balance.
Okay.
We had projected to use 650, and we reduced that. So I have zero entered in for first draft for 2026. But that, as you see, at the end of the general fund total, which is on page 19, the general fund will be in a deficit of 580,000. But again, this is not any edits to any of the budgets. This is merely department request plus wage and fringe. So my intent now is to go back to each of the departments, review them again with them, and see where can we collectively reduce. I was hopeful to have a, a meeting with them prior to today, but that did not happen yet. So that will be before, um, probably not before Thursday, hopefully before Thursday. But I need to have, the departments need time to review their budgets and say, what can they willingly move? What can they adjust before we come back to the commissioners to say, okay, this is where, where we, where we land when we put our collective heads together. As well as we don't, uh, yet have our marching orders for the union negotiations that are coming up in the fall. So again, that is why I put it in as a 0% for now, just so you would see, if we stay status quo, where would we land? There's also many other items in here that were presented in the past. So I presented them again. However, we still do not have solid healthcare numbers. We still do not have solid work comp numbers. So I presented to you the fund balance, the balance sheet, excuse me, for both of those funds, for work comp as well as the health fund, just so you could see the balance. Work comp fund is trending very nicely.
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
I'm sorry. The page 63.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. So because we receive some federal dollars, we have to be compliant with the federal guidelines. And that means we should not have a fund balance in these two funds greater than a 60-day rollout. With the work comp fund, we are trending perfectly. So if we keep it at the 2% and our rates do not increase, we'll be fine. However, with the health fund, we have greater than 60-day rollout. So per our auditors, we have to start using some of that fund balance to reduce it to closer to 60-day rollout. So I've been doing that for October, November, and December where we're reducing the hit to the department budgets. We're not billing them for 100% of their health costs. We're billing them at a fraction at 50%. Because if we just wipe out that and don't charge them at all, we can't get reimbursed from any of our grants. So we're billing them at a fraction instead of saying for two months, we're not going to bill at all. We're billing them at a fraction. So we can still recoup some of the expenses for the grants that allow that. But for next year, we will be able to use some of that fund balance to offset the high healthcare costs. But we have to be very cautious because we still have to have that rollout. We don't want to use that entire fund balance in one year and then have zero. We need to have 60 days.
Commissioner Bardwell.
Please.
You said 0% in this draft for salary and wages?
Yes.
What did you say? Health insurance? Half of the increase?
Yes. So.
Was that 17% if I do my math roughly? 17%.
17? Okay. That was my only question. Thank you very much.
And that is based, again, on his 38% increase.
Correct.
My math calculated 49, but that was comparing our current exact plan to the current, the rate of the current exact plan for 2026. He said we cannot have that exact plan because it's a violation of PA 152. So his 38% increase is from our current base plan to our future base plan.
And he is?
Gibson.
Gibson.
As well as Brown and Brown.
Okay.
Brown, the numbers are very similar because they're coming from Blue Cross.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So if we compare true apples to apples, it was actually a 49% increase. But because, again, PA 152 comes into play, he had to increase the deductible in order to be compliant with PA 152.
So where'd you come up with the 17%? Not half of 38?
Half of 38.
That's 19.
Oh, 19% then. I apologize.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
Half of the 38%.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then I'm trying to keep it brief as I know this is a lot to digest. So that's why you have a packet you get. You can take it home and review and map with more questions. Page 65 to 67 is the position report. So last year, I believe, HR Director presented numbers per department. So I wanted to follow that same method. So as you will see, there are some full-time and some not full-time. So the total, the report from the SNA unfortunately does not total. However, I came up with 176 full-time and 53 part-time for a total of 229. And you will see some departments have a vacant position. You'll see that the total is one and the amount filled is zero. That is because it's a vacant position. And then lastly is the updated calendar. I do think we should consider moving our public hearing. We currently have it set for December 11th. Because we don't have final numbers, we have not even had negotiations yet. We also don't have healthcare numbers. I think December 11th was very optimistic, but we might want to consider moving that. We have to notify the citizens by an ad in the paper 30 days prior. So I would need to put an ad in the paper by November 10th for the December 11th. So the next, Thursday's meeting obviously is before that. The following meeting is on November 13th. So that is after my deadline to post. So if we could decide today or on Thursday, what is our tentative date? So I know if I have to notify the paper on or before November 10th. I do not want to miss the deadline.
Your next board meeting would be December 22nd. If you wanted to have the public hearing on the same day as our board meeting, which I believe is what we did in the past. December 11th. And if Erica's asking to push that out a little bit, your next regular scheduled board meeting would be December 22nd.
On a Monday.
Due to the holiday. Yes.
Commissioner Bardwell, can I ask?
Yes, please.
When is this going to be online? Did you say, sorry, I missed that? Today sometime?
When we post the agenda for Thursday's meeting.
Okay.
So however.
So this is going to be online? That's my question.
Yes, it will be in the agenda packet for Thursday's meeting. However, if any of you would like me to email it to you sooner so you can view it on your computer, I'm happy to do that. Would you all like me to email it to you? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're looking at this first draft. I haven't been here before, so this is all kind of new to me. But I have been involved before in other budgeting processes. Is there any way that I can see or we can get data from before the 20, year 24?
Yes, I did do a review back to 23. I can go back further. I just, it made the pages, it increased the number of pages even more. But yes, I'm happy to do that. Is 23 enough or do you need that further?
I would like it back a little further than that on a common because if somebody has a big project going on that it's budgeted for.
Yes.
That's unusual.
Yes.
You can't see that necessarily with two years of.
Now, what I'd like to do, if that's okay, is give you expenditures and revenues and not the budget. It would just be expenditures and revenues for the past five years. Would that be acceptable?
I think five years, okay.
Now, in 2022 is when we took the ARPA funds and we converted them to be lost revenue. So you will see a significant spike in 2022 of $10 million. So again, that's an anomaly. That is not something we normally receive.
Commissioner Barrios, would it be helpful to go back even maybe one extra year so you could see numbers from pre-2020 and maybe see like 2019, which would be a something.
A normal year.
The pre-normal year might.
That might be, that might be better because 2020 would be a.
That would not be a good gauge in, because there was so much different that year. It might be helpful, Erica, just to go back that one additional year. I know it makes the report just a little bit bigger, but I'm just thinking, if that's Commissioner Barrios's idea, that might be helpful.
And Commissioner Barrios, would you like it specifically as detailed? Is this with every line item? Or do you want totals?
You know, I think if you just attach totals and I have any questions, I can come back to you and say, can you tell me what this is?
Sure.
A little, that might be easier for me.
Well, we could, we could run it both ways.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. The SNA will allow, you know, we can run it one way, run it another, send you both PDFs. You could open it. Right. If I send it to you in a PDF, does this need to be brought back to the board? Or is, can I just email it to the Commissioners? And then Jody, do you need a copy as well?
Sure. Thank you.
Sure.
Email is okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that'd be fine. Commissioner Bardwell, are we, as a finance committee, are we gonna have a meeting also before the summer 11th soon be changed?
I think it would be a good idea.
I do too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Would this be discussed in the statutory finance meeting? Or do we need a separate finance meeting?
What would you suggest?
I mean, it's going to be a public meeting, so it doesn't really matter.
Could be a full board or could just be, probably advantageous for a full board.
That's true. Yeah.
I'd agree. Same thing.
Yep. I would suggest we look at changing it according to the Manhattan Clerk's suggestion the 22nd as far as on the calendar.
For the public hearing?
Yes. So the 22nd of December? Which is Monday. A Monday, I should say.
We already have a board meeting scheduled that day.
Okay. That's what I meant for the hearing. As far as for the other meeting, we can look at. So we're going to go from the 11th to the 22nd, right? Yeah. Okay.
And Erica, in the past, we've usually posted that for 9:00 AM for the public hearing. If we're still in board matters, we will recess board meeting, call the public hearing and hold that hearing and then resume back into board. Just so, because this will be your first full-time as going through, so.
As far as a finance meeting, any suggestions, requests?
I'm looking at December, December 8th, which is the first. Maybe the whole meeting in December, like after that? I'm just throwing that out there. Since we're here anyway.
We're all here.
Yeah.
I can post for that if you would like. Thank you, Jody. You're welcome.
And will those two meetings have to be on the agenda for Thursday to change or just the calendar?
Just the budget calendar will be amended. The finance committee is a special meeting that's being called by the pleasure of the board so we can post that as a regular.
Okay. Thank you.
That's my belief as to how it should handle. Yeah.
Also?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
I'm just, a question is I wanted to get updated on negotiations because we're really late. We've said fall week. I think it is fall. Since we may be carrying negotiations over 26, unless there's a, they have a strategy. What is going on in negotiations? Can you update us?
So we will need to go to closed session to discuss what the board is directing us to do. I know that we have had some preliminary meetings. However, no true negotiations. Let me see if Shelley wants to come in to give any further update. She might. Yes, please. I heard the door. It might be her. She might be listening. So we were hoping to obviously meet with them and conclude our negotiations in 2025, if at all possible. We do need to look at a date for going into closed session to discuss.
Here she is.
Here she is. Thank you.
You're welcome. So everything we've received so far, by the way, good morning Commissioners, has been monetary, so we would need a closed session to move forward. We have met with the units to start discussing health insurance because as we all know, that was a bit of a block. So we're still working with Gibson to get some numbers. And we'll be meeting while we have a closed session, but we'll be trying to line up some dates here in the very near future. We reunion, we're looking at sometime after deer hunting.
So if we go into closed session, we normally would do that on board meeting day? What were your suggestions?
Correct. We would do that on a board meeting day with our labor law.
Would that be the, maybe the 13th of November? How, when did you want to schedule that?
So we met with the unions and their representatives.
Thursday, Erica?
To go over some health insurance options. They had a lot of questions. We are still looking to receive numbers back from Gibson. There's been a little bit of a holdup there from the Blue Cross Blue Shield side. I would think definitely by the 13th if we could have a closed session that day potentially.
And Shelley, I did.
No problem with it.
Yeah, worked for me.
I did mention that to Jamie Nacidis. And so she said that if the Commissioners did choose November 13th, she would be able to attend.
Okay. That'd be my suggestion, yes.
The 13th. And if you can just clarify what time you want Jamie to present, whether it's 8:30 or 9:00.
I would check with her.
And then let me know and I can get that added for the posting. I would just need to know by, if possible, by this Thursday just because then I won't have to amend the notice that we do up. So if possible.
I'm sure I can find out by Thursday. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Erica.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions related to the update?
Thank you very much.
Thanks. That completes the new business. We'll move into old business. Is there any old business? Can we sort of board? The pleasure of the board, I'd like to give you just a brief update on the Amish Bridge. Representative Alexander called a week last week. We were discussing the application for the easement. He has the application. I think I mentioned it earlier with the description. He engaged Cody again to create the, what is going to be needed in terms of description and logistics, where it's going to be. So it's moving forward more rapidly than it ever has. I sense the DNR are more positive about it. So I would expect something to be wrapped up hopefully by the next meeting, at least the paperwork. The only other aspect that we have, it's a $300 application fee. I talked to the bishop of the community and they're working on that. So between that, the description, we're attempting to get away from a survey because it's only 30 feet through a sort of a path. Nothing very large. It'll probably be less than a quarter acre if you add it all up all the way through. So hopefully we get something moving on that so that it can be more solid and then start planning the road clearing and whatnot. So that's in the works.
So the $300 application, where's that go?
To the state, to the DNR, to review for the application of the easement.
They couldn't do that for free, huh?
Well, we asked that and are still asking that, but getting prepared. Certainly from that perspective, we wanted to get the community prepared. They're more willing to pay it. They're more willing to, at one point, to pay for the extension of the shoulders, like they did down in Hastings. And then they're a bit concerned, of course, so no. The state didn't waive it that I'm aware of, but we're attempting. They're attempting. His office is attempting. It's been three years. Any questions on the Amish Bridge? Sort of, it's not going to take them totally off M53. It'll alleviate some of the traffic. There's a bridge there. It would take them off, but it would be too much of an expense between the township, county, Sanlet County, which is having to go, definitely having to go. Anything else for business? Hearing none. I don't have anything to report in finance technology. DM, you have something? Why don't you just keep the dark web from us? Building and grounds, Commissioners?
I don't have anything. Director Miller? Mr. Cook?
Nope.
Back to you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawson's not here. Commissioner Barrios? Commissioner Barrios, anything I've pushed now in the last two weeks? All right, nothing on personnel. Is there any other business coming for the board? Hearing, you're seeing none? Well, it's the time for public comment. Is there anyone likely to address the board? Public comment?
I might need to go over the documents, but I'll make sure it's quick. I wrote it, but it's hard to say it. I just want to take a moment to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. To every firefighter, police officer, paramedic, emergency helicopter crews who came that night. Thank you and God bless you. You were there in the most worst moment of our lives. And you showed up with courage, compassion, and strength that could only come from God. You didn't just do your jobs. You were instruments in his hands that night. To Sheriff Robinson, Nick Britton, and many others who I didn't get their names. And everyone else who helped. I don't even have the words to express how grateful I am. That night, my brothers and I needed all the help we could get. And you were there without hesitation. I never forget Sheriff Robertson looking me in the eyes and saying, anything you need, I'll help you. In that moment, when everything fell shattered, God used his words to remind me that he is still with us and that he would provide even in the middle of pain. To the troopers, to the deputies who handed us the knife to cut seatbelts, who made sure my brother and I got to Covenant and hurriedly, safely. Thank you. You were calm when everything around us was chaos. You were steady when our world was falling apart. Through you, God showed us his mercy and protection in a very real way. And to everyone else who's reached out since, who's prayed for us, who's sent us messages, who's brought us food, or simply held us in their hearts. Thank you. Your love has been one of the ways God has carried us through this. To everyone who were there, who was there that night, whether I know your name or not, God bless you. You were his hands, his feet in a moment we will never forget. You showed that thus, that even in tragedy, God's light still shines through people like you. From me, my brothers, and from the entire Pupman family, thank you for being there. We will never forget what you did for us. May God bless you and protect each of you just as you protected us that night. A lot of people don't know, me and Brandon were right behind Blake. And I know you guys are doing everything you can to fix the world's problems and you'll be blessed for it. Right now, the only thing that we're asking for is Gia. That's the prayers we need right now. She's in rough shape. She's still at U of M. We got her to U of M, took us a while, but she's stable enough. We've like carried her down to U of M. God willing, tomorrow she's having her, uh, neck surgery done, surgery done. Uh, the, the vertebrae that connects your neck to your skull was fractured almost. There's only about a half, a half an inch left attached. I don't know how she survived. It's a, it's, she's a miracle. They found the hardware. It's a very rare surgery, I guess. A lot of times people don't survive from that kind of fracture. It's either severed or not. And so they found, uh, U of M has found the hardware they needed and it's getting flown in from Germany of all places. She's having that surgery, God willing, tomorrow. Uh, she's gonna need a shunt. Her body can't regulate her. There are fluid in her brain effectively. She's still in a drain. It was clogged last night. My brother just texted me and they, they fixed it this morning. Uh, she might have her sun surgery tomorrow. They're not sure because she still has a lot of, uh, debris around her skull. Uh, they did do a craniotomy. But she's alive. She's well. She opened her eyes. She's responsive. She squeezed my brother's hand. And so we know we're there. We know that God is great. We know that through all things, our family's crest, Romans eight twenty-eight, all things come together for good for those that love the Lord. And I'll tell you what, my family does love the Lord. And, uh, this happened for a reason. We got a lot of love and a lot of prayers at the funeral. And I, and my brothers and I want everybody to know that if just one person comes to Christ because of this, it's worth it. It's worth it. It's what my dad would want, it's what my mom would want, definitely make it. Pray for Brandon and Casey. They haven't been home since the accident. They live in that room with Gia twenty-four-seven. They just need special prayers. They're so strong. Pray for Blake. Noah, he's doing good. We got him home. He's about eighty percent physical, about eighty percent mental. He's got about twenty percent to go, but he's, he's doing it. He's a strong kid. Lulu and Alina, they were also in the accident. Lulu's, uh, hip is healing nicely. She had a couple MRIs tomorrow to make sure she doesn't have surgery and we'll know more on Tuesday, tomorrow. Uh, Alina did have surgery on her clavicle, but that's healing nicely. But I just wanted to come here today because I know you guys, I know the community sometimes, being in an elected physician, you guys just hear the doom and gloom. Fix the problems, fix the problems, fix the problems. And I think that's how a lot of people come to, come to Jesus too. They're just like, I have problems, I have problems. But I think there's a time that we need to praise too and reward good behavior. And the acts of the first responders and the people that have taken that role, man, they really stepped up to the plate. And they deserve recognition. They deserve our love. They deserve our compassion and understanding. And, uh, I think what we should take to heart is for this community and what I think To School of County needs to get back to is the second greatest commandment that God gave us. Love your neighbor as yourself. That's tough. That's tough. But if we start doing that, we'll keep To School of County great. We have a great community. And I just wanted to make it public that there's a lot of great people. And so keep them in their prayers because it's hard to be a police officer, get X amount of dollars, putting your life on the line. It's hard to be a first responder, seeing the things that you shouldn't see in life. So I pray for them. I pray for them regularly. But I wanted to come up here and tell you that the Pupman family is going to be okay. God is great. He's got us through this, he'll keep us through this. And, uh, we're going to continue praising his name and fighting the fight. That's all he can ask of us. But I just wanted to make it known and I love you guys. I know you guys are working hard. I know you guys got a lot of big decisions coming up in the future. And, uh, if you need anything, you know where we live. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Any thoughts from the board? Sometimes our, no thoughts are better or very hard to express. And certainly from this board and the families and so many, as you've experienced, that are praying and with you constantly in prayer. Gia, I really appreciate the update. That's always a question, have you heard? And, uh, certainly from anything that we can do for you, as many have said, we can really be there for you. Just beyond words. We appreciate you coming here.
Just gonna say, I don't know of any other family that would, that people have taken and said what you've said in such a horrific situation. And I have talked to a number of people who have made calls to the Blue Commission. Contacted, talked to people. It's, it's a big hurt. I know you're getting hurt. We appreciate you coming here, taking strength, come here and make us. I want to thank you. For your service. And with a car.
That's right, God bless. Anyone else have any public comment? Anyone else? There's nothing virtually. Okay. I can't see from here. All right, well, thank you for the public comment. Thank you for the heartfelt update. Is there a question for adjournment?
I'll make that motion support.
Move supported, moved by Commissioner Cook, supported by Commissioner Lutz to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, hearing none, do your standard adjournment.